I'm ready to go.
You are, Brian.
I'm waiting on Don to give me the official signal.
He's gotta get used to his new DJ booth.
No, he's been doing this.
Are you ready?
He built that thing.
Okay, I'm gonna call the August 3rd, 2017 Lakeland Shores City Council meeting to order. Kim, would you please take roll call?
Yes, Kim Schroeder.
Here.
Tom Wilson.
Here.
Brian Zeller.
Here.
Randy Kopeski.
Present.
John Bishop.
Here.
If you'd join me for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First business item is adopting the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
A second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Tim.
Tim did. Any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Consent agenda. Items may be pulled for discussion and/or separate action. We have two items on the consent agenda. The approval of the June 1st, 2017 city council meeting minutes and approve the monthly claims and financial reports. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by the sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. I see that we have law enforcement as present. We always value their time, so I'd like to welcome you if you guys would like to come up and make any comments or share the monthly report, what have you.
Hello?
Hello?
Deputy Brianna Frye.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
Deputy Brianna Frye.
Welcome.
And Anthony Jering.
Welcome.
We don't really have anything for you guys. I think there's about 14 calls for service. Nothing significant. Do you have anything for us?
It was two months ago, we were having a problem on Lakeland Shores Road with some false alarms. Do you know if that's continued to be an issue?
I don't think so. I didn't see anything.
Okay. I know we had one the other night, but I didn't know if it was.
Weren't there two on that?
Yeah, there was two on the recent one, so I don't.
Okay.
And it says Lakeland Shores. I don't know whether it means Lakeland Shores Road or whether it means.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the call, the specific address, I guess. It wasn't a call that I took, so I fill in when Tanner's not here.
We're just trying to get our hands around the issue.
Okay.
There was one month where I think there were five or six calls, and we don't want to be wasting your time with false alarms, so we're just trying to get our arms around it.
Was it one of your guys'?
No.
We were wondering if it was the same resident.
Okay.
Right.
They, previous years, they've been told to get it taken care of and.
So know that we're working on that.
All right, I can check and see.
Anything happening in the valley in general that we need to be aware of?
Nothing, nothing really. So just a lot of the construction going on, detours, traffic with that.
Bike path's 100% open, so we're out of the woods on that?
Yes.
Excellent. All right, well, thank you for your time.
Even though we're at the Lake St. Croix Beach, you were Lakeland Shores.
Lakeland Shores, yes.
Okay, just so that you're aware. All right.
I am aware, yes.
Perfect. Thank you for your time.
All right, you're welcome.
Really appreciate it. Nice to meet you both.
But I'll just note that Brianna used to be another city that I'm aware of, and so she's very tough, very tough.
Great.
Just wanted to warn all of you.
We'll be on our best behavior.
Okay. Thanks for the heads up, Kim.
Great, thank you.
All right.
Have a nice night.
Thanks.
We've got Candace on the agenda, but I don't see her, so maybe we'll move past that and circle back when she joins us. We'll move on to item four, unfinished and new business lease agreement with city of Lake St. Croix Beach for the use of their city hall. Kim, do you wanna?
Certainly. The mayor, like he had said previously, had spoke with the mayor of this city here and worked in agreement, and they, Lake St. Croix Beach was so kind as to allow the city of Lakeland Shores to have their meetings here. I spoke with the clerk administrator here, and he had spoke with his council. They agreed on $100 per month for your regular meeting night, $50 each additional meeting night in the month. The clerk administrator asked me to kinda draft a lease to bring forward for you, and then upon approval, he would bring it to his council. So I did type up a lease that was basically just the same as the one that you had with the city of Lakeland. So that is enclosed in your packet for consideration.
Any council comments or questions or concerns about that? As you mentioned, it's consistent with what we've agreed to in the past with the city of Lakeland. Is there a motion to approve the lease agreement?
I'll move to approve the lease agreement.
Is there a second?
A second.
Again, any questions or concerns? Call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, and thank you to Lake St. Croix Beach. We appreciate them allowing us to have our meetings here. Item B is elections, JPA Washington County. And Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but this was a proposal that we had received from Washington County relative to providing election services every two years. Is that correct?
No, this was for one year. Next year.
Okay. But in theory, we could contract with them every time there's an election cycle.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Okay. And this came about because Kim is the clerk at another community, so come election time, she can only be in one place at one time. So I had asked Jennifer up at the county, you know, what our options were. So they were kind enough to give us a proposal. Frankly, the cost of this proposal's, you know, approaching $10,000, where historically it's, we've been able to accomplish it for right around $2,300?
About, between $3,000 and $3,500.
Okay.
About 10 bucks a vote.
So frankly, what I need to do is I need to educate myself and talk to probably Judy Savage and a couple of the other election officials that we've had in the past to see who spearheads that effort, and then really would it come down to certification at the end of the night after the election's over relative to your role?
No. The clerk does administer the elections for the city. You are in a situation where you can contract with the county. You can also appoint an elections officer.
Okay.
Perhaps somebody, like you mentioned, that has run your elections before in the capacity of a head judge.
Okay.
The training would be the same. They would go to the city clerk's training. There's a head judge training. That is offered by the county. There is no cost. It's actually a requirement. But by appointing this elections official, you can have somebody run your elections.
Joan Helt's been doing it for 100 years for us.
Right.
Yeah, Joan's been the election coordinator and.
I'm sure she'll like that comment.
Yeah. And, you know, we have paid her.
I hope so, because she does such a good job, she knows everything.
Well, she used to be your clerk, too.
Exactly.
So I'll follow up, or one of us will follow up with Joan and just confirm that she's willing to continue in that capacity, and we'll coordinate that effort. I do know there was, somebody had made the comment, a bit of a question or concern about us having our voting take place at the school, and, you know, some of the potential conflicts that that causes with school taking place at the same time voting is taking place. So we might wanna look at our options for alternative locations.
Last year, Joan spent 49 hours, and we paid her 20 bucks an hour.
Okay.
And that was as an employee.
This proposal certainly shows us that we're fortunate to have her, and if she's willing to continue, we should do that.
I will note that the county puts their estimated costs out on a per precinct basis.
Okay.
So you have one precinct, a larger city that has the same number of precincts, one would be the same price. It has nothing to do with voters, number of voters.
Hmm.
And going through this, I did see an issue, several issues anyway, so.
Okay.
I think an elections officer might be the way for you to go.
Okay. Excellent. So just to be clear, we weren't contemplating a change. It was, I ran into somebody at the county, asked what our options were. We received a proposal, so I just wanna be very clear. We weren't contemplating a change. We're just kind of educating myself, if you will. So Cindy, did you have a comment?
No, I was gonna say about Joan.
Oh, okay. Okay. I see that Candace has joined us. We're gonna jump back to you, Candace.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, can we just get a vote, a motion on the GPA?
Does it require one? I think it was more of an information item, wasn't it?
It's an agenda item, it should.
But we're not making any changes?
To deny the joint powers agreement.
Okay. I certainly would make that motion to decline the proposal. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Now we're gonna jump back to Candace. Welcome, Candace.
Thank you. I apologize. Traffic wasn't what I expected, nor was your location, frankly. So I'll pass these out.
Here, we can just pass them on for you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, council and staff and members of the public. My name is Candace Hanson, and I represent Minspec. It's the building inspection company that provides the official building official for you, for the city of Lakeland Shores, and for the community. And because I have met some of you before now, why I think it's an opportunity for me to introduce myself, others I have met, pardon me. I will draw attention to the, the sort of press release that's on the front cover, and just let you know that this was an article that I wrote as a budding city manager, city administrator, 25 years ago. So although not current, the topic is still really current, because it is about nuisance abatement. And it is, but as a new, fresh city administrator, I learned a valid lesson one night when I was out mowing my grass, and that was that there is another perspective other than mine. And I had a big hedge that I loved, keep natural and, you know, really unwieldy on my side, and little did I know that it made life difficult for my neighbor. But he came around his side of the hedge, from around his side of the hedge one night, and he explained that to me. That made grooming his yard difficult when I kept my hedge natural. And it was probably a really good lesson for me as a new city administrator, that I needed to slow down and listen and remember that there's always, there are always two sides to the story. And so that was, that was the lesson for me. And this is an article that's available to you if you decide to use it anywhere on your website, or in newsletters, or whatever plagiarized to your heart's content, because it's a message to the community. Most cities are pretty tapped when it comes to human resources, and to send the police out for what our neighbor disputes is, you know, really taxing on the human resources. And so I would just say, encourage your community members to talk to each other, because oftentimes that creates more ill will if the police are engaged, or a community service officer. And much goodwill comes from just talking to each other and gaining each other's perspectives. So you're invited to use that.
Okay.
And any questions on that?
Uh-uh.
Thank you. Well, but the primary reason for my attendance tonight is to do the mid-year report. Minspec, as I've said, is your building inspector and provides the permit approvals, the plan review, the permit approvals, and then the inspections for projects within your community. And so we have the January to June comparisons 16 and 17, and you've almost doubled in your, in 17 compared to your 16. So you have about $20,000 in value, and less permits, actually. You went from 12 to 10 permits. And that is just the residential. Since you don't have a lot in the area of commercial, that is your total of permits. And what that always says to me is that when people are pursuing projects and they're taking out permits, that means they're investing in their properties. And that's always good for your community, that people are putting money into their properties and increasing in their values. Would there be any questions about the report, or anything about Minspec in particular?
Candace, I've got one question for you.
Sure.
We had met last year and talked about your company and its structure and the number of employees you have, and we had talked about whether or not there was maybe a way to have maybe fewer people involved in the permitting process. And I don't know that we've really followed up on that discussion, but I think there was a commitment between you and Scott at the time that we would try to have one inspector involved per property as opposed to multiple. Are we still able to do that?
From my, my information, there's one person that comes over here mornings, because he lives in Lake Elmo, so it's convenient for him. He starts out his day here. If there are others coming, I'm not aware of that. Carl is his name, and we have him doing the east side corridor as his morning route. So I can double-check that, and I will let you know if that is the case, that he's consistently doing your inspections, because I know that was among your priorities and ours.
Yeah.
Yep. Now, in as far as plan review and permitting, plan review is, all the residential is done by one person, so there's consistency there.
Yep.
And all of the commercial is done by a single person, so there's consistency there. So that I can assure you.
Okay. Great.
Okay. And then there is just one more thing that I wanted to touch on while I was here, and because one of my missions in the last year was to help our client cities and townships get on board with the annual reporting requirement. And I'm not sure if, let's see, if that work would have come from Kim? Would that be right, that annual report? I'm not sure. There was a transition there, but just to let you know that there'd been a lapse of the reporting, and I'll give you the name of this report that the state wants, and it's a mile long. Municipal Construction and Development Fee Revenue and Expense Annual Report. A mouthful to say that they like to know what you're spending towards, what cities are spending towards development fees and what your expenses are. And they, there hasn't been a penalty of any sort for not reporting, but I just wanna congratulate your city on getting back on track with reporting. It was back in 2008 when the first report was done, and then more recently in 2016. So that was part of my mission in helping cities get current with the reporting with the state.
Okay.
So thank you.
Great. Any questions of Candace?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm trying to figure out this, permits and valuation. Is that the, so like in 2017, we've had $20,800 in revenue from building permits?
Not from revenue, but from, that would be the estimated value at the time a permit is granted. And that is based on information provided by the contractor, combined with a formula that's provided by the state of Minnesota.
So the value of the work being completed?
Yeah.
Well, this ain't correct, I know that. I look back at 2016. I pulled building, three building permits in the city, and the valuation was more than that, of $11,000. And I'm like, I guess I'm, I guess I'm a little dumbfounded, like I'm looking at residential. I pulled a window and siding permit, so where would that go under? House additions, house remodel?
Yes.
And the valuation was more than $8,500 or $2,000.
I did have to check on that kind of question just lately at one of my visits, and it's when that permit, when that actual permit was pulled. So if it was pulled in the previous year, like December, it wouldn't.
No, it was last, 2016.
Okay, you're sure.
And then I, and then I pulled a fireplace one, and I don't know what that would go under.
So the first one was siding?
Yeah, and that was in June, and then I had one in March for fireplace, and one was for soffits, ventilation of a kitchen. And it's like, you know, these numbers aren't right. And then I know.
You might wanna take a second look. I wondered, 'cause I had a permit that I pulled for my detached structure, and I was thinking maybe I pulled that late 15, but I don't think I did. I think it was pulled 16. So you might wanna just take a second look at 2016 numbers.
And then I know a neighbor across the street who didn't have a building permit, which, and I had brought that to the intention, because I was working across the street from that house. And I pulled a building permit, and then I contacted you guys with them not having a building permit, and it didn't seem to slow their process down to where two previous jobs, I had to come up with a drawing for a fireplace. I mean, I was putting a gas fireplace, so I'd go through a plan review, which took 10 business days to get a plan review on a two-foot by six-foot long struc, or framing.
I understand.
And they didn't pull a permit. They got caught. They let them keep going with the project. And I responded, did they have to do a plan review? Did they have to come with a drawing? And that, the whole time, that project didn't slow down once. And so then I look at here, and I know a basement finish, $8,500. And all basement finishes worth more than that. So I just, you know, these, these numbers are skewed.
So we'll ask Candace to take a second look at it and update us.
So I just wanna double back, and Tim, you referred to the siding, it was siding and one other thing, windows?
Siding and windows. Yeah, it was in siding. And I think that was at a value, I don't know if it was 55, 60,000, something like that.
60 grand.
Okay.
I know what the check was.
All right. And then you were also working on the fireplace project, which was in 16 as well?
Yep. And I can't remember what the valuation was at. And I also had one that had pulled building permit to put soffits above a kitchen, kitchen cabinets. And they were doing ventilation, which I had nothing to do. They had to pull a ventilation permit, but I had to get a building permit to frame two feet of soffit, 20 lineal feet, and that took over 12 business days, and I had to provide a drawing for that, which I, you know. When you're trying to schedule work and you don't know when you're getting a building permit.
So Tim, I just wanna be clear. Your first concern is whether or not the 2016 total valuation numbers.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah.
And the second concern you're expressing was that the processing.
Oh, yeah.
Is slower than what you're accustomed to.
Exactly.
Okay.
And when you, and I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware that for 2016, it is only six months. It's not the full year.
It's year-to-date. That's worth mentioning.
That is right.
So it's a year-to-date comparison versus year-to-date. So were any of those permits pulled after this time?
No, those were all, they were all before June.
Okay. Good point, Randy.
Yeah, that is a good catch.
Okay. So there's a little feedback for you.
No, I appreciate that. Is there, are there any other comments that you want me to take back?
I don't think so. Thank you for making the trip.
Well, and just to let you know that we really appreciate your business. We like working with you, and happy to help in any way. Just keep in touch. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Have a nice night.
Mm-hmm.
We'll jump back to 4C, appointment to recycling collaboration board. Kim, do you wanna introduce that one?
For your staff report, the city of Lakeland Shores, you recall that you revised all your ordinances for the solid waste management in an attempt to get where you are now, which is to work on an RFP. The ordinance has been adopted, and it was published. The next step is to draft the joint powers agreement for the four participating communities. Each city, the collaboration board is looking for each city to appoint a board member to work on the joint powers agreement. And council member Tom Wilson, who has participated in several of the meetings, has volunteered to work on that board on behalf of the city of Lakeland Shores.
Tom, is that, you're still willing to do that?
Yeah.
That's all I needed was, yeah. So I would make a motion.
I kinda got painted into a corner, but yes, I'll do it.
Perfect. We're gonna make it official right now. I'd make a motion that we appoint Tom Wilson. You're seconding?
I second.
Any discussion? Anybody else have any interest in participating? Call for a vote. All those in favor of appointing Tom Wilson, indicate by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Appreciate that. We've got item D, 2017 Street Improvements Contractor Application for Payment Number One. John?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, in your packet, you should have a memo, looks a little like this one here, a little table on it in the front, which summarizes funds that have been approved, and also the contractor payment history, which is simply tonight's pending application. So with that, I'll just step through what's in this table. You're likely most interested in, in the middle column on the right, which is titled Lakeland Shores. This is where I report on the costs and the budget specific to Lakeland Shores. Just to remind council, this is a joint project with the city of St. Mary's Point, with St. Mary's Point being the lead agency. You can see the totals here, but for Lakeland Shores, the project budget was originally $30,000. Bids came in below that, so with a 10% contingency, the recommended budget amount is $28,000 roughly, 122 and 33 cents. We did authorize increase in the budget of $2,500, up to $2,500 for the gravel shoulders. And I have to apologize, I meant to bring the exact number. We did come in under that, that amount for the gravel shoulder, and that work is not yet being, being built. So it's not, it's not something you're paying for tonight, but we did come in under that $2,500 amount. So total funding approved by the council was $30,622.33. So this evening.
John, can I interrupt you for a second?
Yes, sir.
And are you thinking then we're gonna be under that amount?
I, right now, all the indications are that, well, under the $2,500. Well, actually, doesn't matter.
No, under the total project, $30,500.
Both, true for both, yes.
Okay.
Yep. The application for payment, if you're looking at the details in the back, there's, there's a lot of numbers in there, which I am happy to answer questions on if you have them, but I'm not going to bore you with going through those detailed numbers unless there are questions.
You reviewed it, and everything's in order?
I have reviewed it. You'll notice my signature is at the bottom of the last page recommending approval. We are withholding 5% even for the work that has been approved for payment, and that's just how these contracts work. We withhold 5% until the very end. So the amount you'd be approving tonight would be $21,171.17, requested by the contractor, Hard Drives, Inc., and we would recommend payment in that amount.
And then, John, just to be clear, the total project of $30,500 approximately, that included a 10% contingency?
Yes, it did.
To your knowledge, we didn't incur any of the contingency?
Not yet, but when, if there are contingency items, we, they usually flush out in the end. But we have, other than the gravel shoulder, we haven't instructed them to do anything additional, and you approved additional fund for that.
And it looked pretty straightforward to me, didn't it, to you, John? I didn't see anything that seemed out of the ordinary down there.
No, it looks good. It's too bad it costs as much as it does, but they seem to have done a good job. And I did talk to John earlier today, and he indicated that they were gonna come back, apparently to add some more fill dirt on the west side of the road there because of those.
Drop off.
Drop off, a little bit.
Sure.
Much, but it's, you know, just one of those situations in which the landowner's But it's, you know, just one of those situations in which the landowner's property is significantly below the level of the road.
Right.
Yeah, it looks good to me.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I made that call myself, just looking at what they did out there. They, they did that shoulder work without notifying us, so we weren't there with them. The, the topsoil in there now is too steep, in my opinion, for them to adequately be able to mow it once the lawn grows in.
Right.
So we have notified the contractor, told them that we expect them to be back out and we will withhold any future payments for that work until they get it done.
So you need a motion and approval of application for payment number one?
Yes, Mayor. And I'll mention that in talking with the treasurer, you, I guess Tom can correct me if I'm wrong. My understanding is he has a check prepared for that amount to go directly to the contractor.
Yes.
Correct.
And so that's how that'll be handled.
Right.
Correct. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. We do the AFP for twenty-one thousand, one-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents to the contractor.
Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Any discussion? Call for a vote. All those in favor, signify by the sign of aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, John.
You're welcome.
Good project. Again, have to give credit to the previous council for not moving forward with the project the year before when it was coming in over costs that proved to be a wise decision. Item 5A, Roads Commissioner Report.
Really not a whole lot to report. I haven't had any complaints from anybody. As usual, the buckthorn and weeds are beginning to get to their full height and drooping into, somewhat into the path of vehicles. On my walks and that type of thing, driving around, it doesn't appear to be, at this point, you know, something that I think that we need to send a letter out for. But I would ask, if anybody's actually watching this, that people make an effort to at least take it back so it's not overhanging the pavement at all. I know it should be three feet back, but I've never really felt that that was necessary. And what, what it does mean is that you have to do it every year rather than doing it once and maybe not having to do it for another five. So I'll keep my eye on that. And it was my intention, although it looks like tomorrow's filling up fast for me, to cut some of it back, like on Lakeland Shores Road and Third Street North. But because I believe that Saturday is the day in which we can haul brush to the thing. And that, that's what I did last year. That seemed to have worked out well, except for the one complaint we did get last year on Second Street North. Other than that, you know, Fourth Street South is still, you know, problematic, I think. You know, it's got some issues, which eventually we're going to have to deal with right there by the school and the hockey rink. But other than that, I think the roads are in fairly good shape. I was thinking, you know, that when we had them, that spray emulsion done last spring, a year ago, in other words, probably 15 months ago, that that seemed to have really worked well, I think, in taking care of some of the problems that exhibit itself. And I'm hoping that we won't have to get anything like that done for at least another two years, maybe.
Okay. Great.
I was going to say on the brush, you might be able to contact the pit. They might let you in, being from the city of Lakeland Shores. So you wouldn't have to go during the brush thing, because I know the city of Lakeland was able to do that also.
Okay. Yeah, that would be really handy, because I don't mind cutting it. It's just I have no place to dump it.
Yeah. So I think they would, you could contact them. I would, I think they'd probably allow that.
I've got contact info if you need it.
Yeah. I'm probably going to help you with that.
Okay.
Thanks, John.
Great. Thanks, John. Tom, Treasurer's Report?
Okay. We're looking at the financial reports through July. And this is actually a combined June and July report, because we didn't have a meeting last month. We did get, if you go to Schedule B1, just take a look at, we did get our second, first half, property taxes. And those came in very nice. So no, no issues with collection of property taxes at this time. And so, and this is also the report, starting at B1, where you can see the comparison, my, my full-year estimate comparison to budget. The other, budget report, it basically compares budget to budget. So, so when we're talking about ten thousand dollar estimated favorable variance for the year, this is where you can really see on a line item, a line item basis where those numbers are. And you can see on the property taxes, I'm projecting about thirteen hundred favorable. The other favorable going down the list is in licenses and permits. And I think we, and maybe it's because we budgeted a little bit low, but some, sometimes there's uncertainties as to collection of, for example, liquor licenses and stuff. So, so we're coming in a little bit strong on that. So that helped the favorable variance as well. I'm not complaining, so.
So again, you're projecting that we're going to be about ten thousand dollars under budget by year-end?
Yes. And about thirty-six hundred of it is on the revenue side. And then about, you know, six thousand dollars is on the expense side. And if you start on B2, you can see thirty-three hundred is in mayor and council wages. Administrative and finance is about twenty-seven hundred. That's where most of it is, is up in, up in the wages area. And then there's a smattering, we talked about the road commissioner wages, another eighteen hundred. We're going to go over budget on recycling. I'm estimating, and by about a thousand dollars. And over budget on elections. So whether that comes to fruition or not, I'm not 100% sure, but I, I thought I'd, I'd put another twenty-five, or five hundred dollars in for elections to build that fund up.
Okay.
Still better than the county proposal, so.
Right. Any council comments, Treasurer's Report?
All I've got, yep.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Appreciate your hard work. Have you changed your mind about your resignation?
No, I have not.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll double our efforts. Thank you. City Clerk, Zoning and Administrator Report?
Mayor, councilmembers, last couple of months since I've seen you, we have gotten all caught up on your building permits, which was quite the scramble, but I think we've got it in good shape now. I have been working on getting your computer set up, because I believe the computer was purchased and shortly after Sandy, Sandy left. And just some file folders, your resolutions, your minutes, just that sort of thing. Basic information there on, on your computer. One issue, the city can't seem to locate the key for your, or your meeting posting box that is across from the school.
John, you were with when, when we closed out with Sandy. Do you recall her giving any keys?
I don't remember that at all, but it, you know, could be that I just didn't-
So I still have, oh, look who's got the key.
Well, copies, I mean, I'm not sure.
Joan?
Joan helps. Posse does.
Joan may have a key, Randy may have a key. We might have more keys than you, than you could possibly dream of. But I will also check, because I still am storing about eight boxes of material for the city in my, my ditch hatch garage. So I'll check and see. Okay?
It might work.
Yes.
If the keys do work, any, all your meetings are posted on your website. But if there are some special meetings or announcements, I will make sure they get posted in this as well.
Great.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Where are we at on Tom Brockman's building? Has anything come up at all as far as?
Yeah, a building permit, an application was just put in for the new home.
No, wait a second. He's talking about the one where the basement was the foundation. Everything's been permitted. She, you, I believe, are talking about, is it 125 Lakeland Shores Road? Tom Scanlon?
You know, I don't know, because it's the, open building permits doesn't have addresses on it, so I'm not sure.
So that was, the property he's asking about was the variance that we granted in April. They removed the structure. The foundation was in pretty poor condition. It really did not make sense for them to build a new home on the old crumbling foundation. We had to do a fair amount of research into the resolution that we actually passed to see if, if he stayed in the exact same footprint, if he could replace the foundation. And ultimately, the determination was made that he could without needing any additional variance. There is a new application coming forward for another property on Lakeland Shores Road for a renovation.
Yes.
And I believe that's what you're referring to. That's the old Blickendorf property.
Okay.
So we're just going to start that review process. And frankly, I think we're just going to struggle and feel our way through it. Kim's got quite a bit of zoning experience, but not necessarily riverway ordinance. So John is going to step up. I know just enough to be dangerous. We're going to see if we can work our way through the process. But clearly, a variance is going to be required. And we'll see how we do, if we need additional support, reviewing and preparing for that application or if between the three of us, we can, we can get through it. Is that fair?
That's very fair.
Okay. I'll start off. Mayor and council reports, the city of Lakeland approached us annually. There is maintenance done on the boulevard, if you will. And Lakeland has always spearheaded that effort, pulling the weeds, you know, getting rid of-
Well, the medians.
The medians boulevards, yeah. They've asked if we would take the lead for a year. And, you know, it's my understanding, it's contracted with a contractor. You review that contract, you make sure the costs are in line, you sign the contract, they go do the work. The cost share portion of it would remain the same. However, that's been allocated in the past. Was it 80/20 or something to that?
Seventy/30.
Seventy/30. So, you know, I'm certainly willing to do that. And, and I'll, I'll dig into it and see what I can find out. The, with our move down here, we still have a couple of file cabinets full of material in the basement at City Hall. John and I are going to go survey exactly how much material we're talking about. I've been storing an awful lot of the files in my garage right now. I think at some point in time, maybe over the winter, we're going to get two or three people together, thin that out as much as possible and then figure out where we want to house that material long-term. I think there's even a possibility that there might be some space in the garage here that we could lease for that type of longer-term storage.
Brian, one of the things that we've been talking about as a council for 10 years, for the sake of argument, I, I don't think we ever came to fruition relative to having a good records retention policy. I would bet that there's a lot of stuff in your garage, a lot of stuff at the basement of Lakeland City Hall, that A, could be pitched. And B, with a record retention, how about microfishing a lot of this? Or putting it on digital storage or doing something? Because that's what we've been talking about. We never got around to doing it. So there's, there's possibilities there, but we have to have a policy.
I believe there's a statutory requirement that we, you know, we're certainly obligated to. Would you mind seeing if you could find a copy of that?
I'm, I'm sure the city's already adopted a records retention policy.
But maybe let's double check to his point. But I guess my bigger concern, Randy, was, and I think, John, you voiced this, we want to make sure if there's anything of any historical value or, you know, that, we wouldn't be required to keep that, but we certainly would want to keep that. So I think the thought is, we'll just spend an afternoon kind of going through there and using our best judgment-
Never been done.
Relative to the historic part of it. And then your points will-
Look at all the stuff they got in here.
Yeah, your points well taken, making sure that we're meeting the requirements of the, of the retention policy.
And I, and I think, excuse me, Kim, when I spoke to Sandy a year ago, let's say, about maybe getting it online or doing something, you know, more advanced than the filing cabinet, she was talking about a fairly hefty price to do that. Now, I don't know, you know, more like, you know, something between 20 and 30 thousand dollars. If you actually had somebody come in and do it.
Scan it off for you.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a cheap process to get somebody-
I mean, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
You know, but it doesn't come, you know, if it was a $5,000 deal and you could have it done, maybe you would consider it.
Let's start with the old-fashioned approach, see how small we can get that pile and then review it then.
Mayor and councilmembers, I'll just add to that. Anything historical that has historical value, but not necessarily what you would want to keep in your records, the Historical Society does keep for you. They will come and pick it up as well.
Well, it's all historical then.
Yeah, right. Thanks for that. Good to know. That's all I have to report. Should we start? John, do you have anything additional?
No, I don't.
Did you want to mention the meeting that I coerced you into on Monday?
Oh, jeez, that's right. Late, late request, I went to a meeting up in Bayport. And it dealt with rules and regulations that, for variances. And it was the city administrator or deputy was from Bayport was there. Another individual by the name of Buck, who I'm told is a Wisconsinite. And, and then the, I can't remember her name, the one that-
Natalie Warren from-
Natalie Warren.
St. Croix River Association.
Ran the small meeting, which I was at, and it lasted a couple of hours. And we just dealt with, oh, like, if you were on the river and you wanted to put a new roof on, you know, whether, what's an earth tone? Okay? And, you know, so they, we ended up with, if you can imagine, Tom, I know you're smirking over there. You know, we might, I asked him a question, well, what happens if I want to put a cedar roof on? You know, is that earth tone? I mean, when you first put it on, I mean, it's kind of orangey, you know? I mean, who's going to offend somebody? And so that was the nature of the discussion. She had a bunch of little piece of plastic things with, that some group had already approved.
Color swatches.
Color swatches, that type of stuff. And there was a pre-application process thing that was a form that they were going to send out for zoning variances and, on the river. And it dealt with, you know, something that the homeowner would fill out at first, give them. This is all about alerting the homeowner that just bought the place that this is not going to be an easy process. And that there are a lot of rules and regulations. And for that reason, you know, don't go out and hire somebody to come up with these grandiose plans. You, you need to know what the rules are first before you actually enter into that kind of.
It's a continuation of her educational material production that she's been working on.
And so it had mostly to do with this pre-application form and the wording within that form.
Excellent.
When we will see that, I don't know, but.
She's been moving pretty efficiently, so I would think we'll, we'll see something in the next couple of weeks, I would think. I appreciate you attending that, I wasn't able to attend. Randy?
Man? Thank you. From the Yellow Rubin Alliance of the Lower St. Croix Valley, we had a most recent meeting. We have to give our condolences. There was a Vietnam veteran living in St. Mary's Point who unexpectedly passed away. We were trying to assist that person, but they succumbed to the bad situation there. So we, our hearts go out to that person and their family member. We're gearing up for our big gala event, which is the Lower St. Croix Valley Veterans Recognition Dinner that comes up the day after Veterans Day in November. So we've still got a little bit of time, but November will be here before we know it. But other than that, we're meeting on a regular basis and doing a weekend to help our veterans out.
Great. Thank you. Tom?
Just a little bit on the, the recycling thing, proposal, the RFP that's going out, just so everybody kind of understands what's going on. It's a recommendation of the county in a lot of cases that, I shouldn't say the recommendation of the county, it's a recommendation of the committee that the vendor supplies and repairs and maintains the containers, the recycling containers, but we own them. And this is part of the contract. And the reason we own them is because in two years, if we have somebody else get a new contract, a different vendor, we don't have to, that we don't- new contract, a different vendor, we don't have to, that we don't have to, everybody doesn't have to get a replacement drum. And so we're going to keep, which is, after some conversations about it, I understood what they were talking about. And the other thing is, is within the contract, all customer complaints are going to the vendor. They're not going to the city clerk, they're not, everything's going to the vendor. And so there was a lot of discussion about the containers, but when it comes right down to it, you know, they're going to have 10 extra ones for the four cities. They're not going to have a big stockpile of them. And when the contract comes to an end, if they don't do, they don't maintain it, we get those containers and they go to the next group. So it's not like we're going to have a pile of containers sitting around here. We're just going to own them. And that way, we don't have to ever go through the process of getting new ones, so. And then the joint powers, which you guys have already talked about and stuff. And I'll do the fire thing later.
Okay. Tim?
Can I ask a quick question?
Certainly.
Is, so we have Maroni's right now that does our recycling.
Yeah.
And then they also do our garbage, but we also have a couple other-
Yeah, we have Highland and we have-
Okay. So in that recycling contract, that's an RFP that's going out, so Maroni's going to bid on it, somebody else, like somebody, okay, I see, okay.
So, and it's going to be a four-city thing, and we're going to try to get same-day service for everybody, you know? And that way, it may not be same-day services garbage like it is for Maroni's currently today, but it would be same-day service for all four cities. And so let's say it was Monday, I don't care what day it is, as a cost savings, because they're not driving out here four different days.
Okay, thank you.
Tim?
Couple things. I did get a call from somebody about some zoning information, and they had got my name off the county. They contacted the county, so I don't know if there's some way Kim could contact the county and get my name off, being the Road and Zoning Commissioner. And then also, I do want to thank Tom, because I had a email from somebody, I think it was St. Croix Beach, contacted me about our benches that we have in Lakeland Shores, and he asked where we got them. So I sent an email to Tom, and he found the invoice was where we got them and how much they were or whatever, and I forwarded to him, and that was like within 24 hours, so thanks. Otherwise, that's it.
I'd just like to take your comment and reiterate, when we get these complaints, Randy received one as well, that actually came from another city. Just can't emphasize enough how much it helps the process if we direct them to, you know, either Kim or the website to fill out the complaint form, sign the complaint form, so that we then can respond accordingly. Otherwise, we're utilizing, you know, city assets, kind of chasing our own tails. So we really need to start with that complaint form as much as possible. All right, we'll move on to-
I'm sorry, they were asking a zoning question.
Oh, sure, sure.
And I said, well-
It just made me think of it, though.
Okay.
And I have to catch myself when I get those calls. It's like, no, that's right, we have a procedure, let's make sure we're following it. We'll move on to agency reports. We've already received the County Sheriff report, Fire Department report. Tom?
Yeah, quickly, we have, we had three probationary members at the Fire Department who have completed all their qualifications. Now they are fully vested members in the Fire Department, which in other words means we need three sets of turnout gear for them at three grand apiece. But that's been budgeted. I know the guy who does the budget, he's over here to my right. We had, in the month, in the month of June, the last month I have reports on, we had 53 calls, four in our town, as a matter of fact, some EMS, and we had a power line down, and carbon monoxide, and another EMS, which is unusual for us. That's a high number of calls for us. As you would expect, a little bit more water incidents at this time of year than getting calls out on the river for, we had a fire on the river and we had a, but there wasn't an R, we had the dive team got called out. But so, that's it for the Fire Department.
Great, thank you. We received the building permit report, engineering report. John?
Mayor, the only thing that I would like to bring to your attention is, in the city's capital improvement plan, we did have some crack sealing planned for this year, although I think the last time that Councilmember Bischoff and I spoke about it, there was, you can correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I think maybe your assessment was that we didn't necessarily need to put a priority on that for 2017. So I'm just looking for a direction. Other than that, this would, this is kind of the tail end of our opportunity. If Council wanted to do crack sealing, now would be a time to give me direction to get quotes for your next meeting. Otherwise, I'll move that forward to 2018, and we can reevaluate in 2018 whether that need is there then.
I think that's our preference, based on previous discussion.
And that's what, kind of what I recalled. I wanted to confirm that that was still the way you wanted to go. So otherwise, we don't have anything else planned for this year. And next year will mainly be crack sealing and patching as needed. I don't see anything else on your CIP. If something else has come up, then let me know.
John had mentioned earlier Fourth Street.
Okay.
So I don't know if offline you two want to talk and see if that's something that we need to take a look at for next year?
Okay.
Well, I think we've talked about it before, and just briefly, you know, I'm not sure whether you said that this was a surface problem, or as compared to, let's say, what was going on over on Quinell.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that means, you know, as to, when you say a surface problem, does that mean you have to take up the whole thing to redo it? Or do you, can you?
Can you do a mill overlay there?
Right. And that's a good question. And in fact, this year, we did the first mill and overlay on a section like that down at St. Mary's Point on Itasca. I think it's entirely appropriate to do so. It saves us some money to do it over a complete reconstruct. We'd want to walk that section just to confirm that there aren't other hidden things in that road, but otherwise, I think that's a good way to go. And it runs, I want to say somewhere between a half and two-thirds the cost of a complete reconstruct, so.
Yeah, I guess if you two had time to look at that, and then I, kind of a naive question, is that 100% Lakeland Shores, or does Lakeland participate in that to some degree?
Fourth is 100% Lakeland Shores.
Okay.
Because the actual corporate boundary runs, I think, right through the middle of the school building. So it's further to the south.
So I think that's another discussion, because the fact that the school is in two municipalities creates some confusion and created some challenges earlier this year relative to work that was being done in Lakeland Shores, but the school is under a Lakeland CUP. So Lakeland had suggested maybe there's a way that we look at that boundary and have the school just in one municipality, so.
Oh, okay.
Maybe we can give them the street at the same time.
Before.
Yeah. Anything else, John?
Nothing else, Mayor. Thank you.
I think that's everything. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I just have one quick thing. I did, Councilmember Wilson and I attended Chris Peterson's retirement party at Shiner's, which was a good turnout, and thanked him for his-
Forty years.
Forty years of service, and welcoming, welcoming in our new Fire Chief, Jim Stanley.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
I second it.
All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you.